Monday, September 18th, 2017, 5:30 PM. This is a budget workshop for the 2018 fiscal year. Council, Clerk Treasure, and we have Building Inspector, Mr. Schrader. And, as we have Mr. Schrader here, maybe we can start with whatever you've got.
Certainly, thank you. Mayor, I volunteer with Corey to come tonight just to kind of go over and introduce this very, very briefly. The building inventory project is a much larger project than, of course, we can cover tonight. But we did at least want to kick this off by getting a list of the buildings, the infrastructure that the city owns, and start some conversations about budgeting for future needs, replacement, maintenance, and things like that. And so we did that, but unfortunately, as Corey and I discovered, that we neglected to include the electronic sign and also the septic system at the park down by the lake. So those are, that's information that I'll be including as soon as I have it developed. I think I agreed for like three hours to the project, and we're under that now, so I'll be able to complete the rest of that work and get that to you guys as soon as it's available. The septic portions, especially the one related to this site that serviced the council or the city hall, the fire station and that park, that's going to be a big one. Joe and I talked about that as well. There's some big-ticket items in here that are going to be pretty expensive, but as you guys have already identified, it'll be beneficial to start setting some money aside so that when the replacement comes for the roof here or the septic system there, that there's some monies set aside so you don't have a big shock all at once. So that's what I attempted to do here was to go through, and this is something that you can review at your leisure, and I'll be available at future meetings to discuss this in more detail. But at least this is a starting point, that we wanted to get things itemized and at least have that conversation be started. And Corey, what did you anticipate as far as some monies to be set aside for capital improvement?
Right now, what was added into the budget was $15,000.
And I think that's a really good starting point. The items that I listed in here come in over that, but if that were the council's direction, I think that would be a good start, you know, as far as putting money aside in the capital improvement program. So there's some needs or some maintenance items that could be addressed even this year. For example, the, some of the pavilions down at the park that are in need of some paint. The restroom structure, for example, that could use some attention even this year, just because those exposed beams and the soffit and fascia, the paint is starting to peel away to the point where if that were cleaned up and painted, that would help the longevity of that building as well. If that were left for any length of time, a couple more years, you'll see from the pictures there, that's going to start affecting the structure itself, and then that's going to get even more expensive. So we can, again, we can, I know there's a lot on your guys' plate, so I at least just wanted to introduce it, and I volunteered just to come and say, here it is, please email if you have any questions, but at least that'll give you some light reading, you know, in the weeks to come. Any questions on that?
So what, the numbers that you came up with, Corey's got a good start at $15,000. Do you have any idea of, what your numbers came in?
I did add that up, and it's around 20, but again, that's just a start. But that would include $9,000 to demo this old shot building. That's nothing that needs to happen right now. That's just an estimate that I got from a local contractor, just so that we don't have to wonder, boy, if that building ever did go away, what would it cost? Well, I just took a number from a local contractor, I asked him to drive by and take a look at it, and that actually came from Andy, Green, from Greenway Excavating. He was doing that demolition down on Alvin Boulevard. So I took that opportunity to ask him about this, and we visited and we talked about it. Because I don't think that this building is really worth saving, at least Joe doesn't think so either. It would just be easier to make it go away someday. So that's one of the suggested items that you might want to budget for in the future, whereas the paint on the pavilion and restroom down at the park by the lake, that would be a more immediate need, less expensive, and also something that would just get us on the road towards more capital improvement and maintenance of the existing structures. So again, this is just a start, something for you to look through, and as you go through this in the weeks and months to come, I'll be available to come back and address anything specifically as you would desire. But I think Corey mentioned $15,000, that's something that I think would be, would be wise to perhaps set aside to capital improvement, and if some of those monies were available even this year, you know, you could look at some of these painting projects or improvement projects and things like that. It's only going to get worse with time. The bracing, for example, the shelters as they're labeled, the, down at the park, I think there's three or four of them, they're metal frame structures. They're solid and they're going to last a good long time, but there is some racking, you know, that I would think would be a good idea to do some diagonal bracing there just to stabilize those a little bit better. Things like that we can prioritize again in the weeks and months to come, but at least this is a start of the project. We wanted to get in front of you tonight, so hopefully you could see the importance of that and perhaps earmark some monies for 2018 for capital improvement. That was the purpose behind it. The other subject I wanted to put in front of you was the document retention efforts we've talked about. Oh, I'm sorry.
I do have a question. In your inventory, during your inventory and looking at the buildings and going through with Joe, do we know when the last time any maintenance was done on these buildings, such as routine painting, anything like that? Has any of that ever been documented as to when staff has done that?
I don't have information on that regard, no.
Painting and stuff, I mean, I would have to say no. Unless Joe has the documentation, that's something you can ask him when he comes in.
Okay.
But, you know, as far as roofing and stuff like that, we have permits and files and that for that kind of stuff, when roofs were replaced and things like that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Bryan.
Just a rough calc, if I understood your question, how much, if I just went through page by page and went, we should put, set aside money for this thing, if I add it up, it's $16,000, so.
Thank you.
If that's, I think that was what your question was.
My question?
Mine.
I hope I've been talking to ours.
Anything else on the building inventory at this point? All right, let's talk about document retention.
The system that we have in place right now is working quite well. The, the storage of building permits, for example, decks, new homes, whatever comes our way, we're saving that information electronically. A lot of cities require two paper copies of everything, where right now we're requiring one. And then the document retention is achieved by saving PDFs electronically in our central server at the office. That's why a lot of businesses and other jurisdictions are saving their plans now is electronically. If you ever needed to retrieve it to be sent via email or what have you, you can just attach it as an email. If you ever needed to recreate that form or that copy of the plans, you could just hit print, and then you would have it again in paper. Obviously, it takes up a lot less physical space. The, the quality of the documents are retained, and they don't degrade over time. We're seeing some files from yesterday and the day before, before we started doing this just fade. You know, the ink fades, the paper fades, they get folded. Unfortunately, sometimes things get misfiled in the, in the actual paper files, so they're not in the right place, so you can't find them right away. So what we're doing now is we're actually saving the building plans for a new house, like I say, as well as a deck electronically, and it's working out really well. They're there, they're accessible, they're easy to maintain, and I would advocate personally and professionally that we start looking at what it would take to go back and archive the existing paper files. It's a big project, I'm not going to kid you on that, but I would propose that we eat that elephant one bite at a time. And, and the first, the important step is to take a bite. And I would say that I would advocate for some monies to be set aside in order, I could provide some staff time for this as well, to organize a system and say, here's, here's how it's going to start. Whether Lori and Corey have any time, once this system is established as far as going back to inventory the files, but the first step, we already have the, the main framework put into place as far as how it's to be done, but what I would say is you start at the first drawer on the top left, and you go through the files to organize, pull staples. There's a lot of duplicates, unfortunately, that, that could be just simply thrown away. We have to be very careful about what we throw away, but there are a fair number of documents that we don't need. A lot of times I come across files of pictures from ice and water and pictures from different inspections. Well, if that inspection's been satisfied, there's no need to keep a lot of that information, so you could simply recycle it and get rid of it. That's going to make those files a lot skinnier. And then you'd also sort it so that you know what's the building, what's the deck, what's the septic, and organize it in such a fashion that when time is available and you scan it to save it electronically, the actual paper shuffling is already done. And I would venture to say that it would be pretty efficient to do, maybe with an intern, a summer intern or a part-time person, to do that physical, take it, scan it, and save it. Going through to kind of triage those documents is going to be a little bit more important than I do that, or Lori, or Corey, somebody that's more, and I'm not saying that they have the time available, but I would be certainly available to do that. I have a good handle on what the state requires for document retention, and I also have a good handle on what we can safely throw away, what we can get rid of. So I would be the one to go through that. I would, I'm advocating for the council to set aside some monies for next year to start that process. I would feel comfortable starting it myself, and then I would have some staff available that would be able to come in and continue with that effort. How far we can get in 2018 is going to depend on just how far we can get, but I think it would be important to start because those files are not getting better with age. So I was hoping to have some conversation with the council, and if you're agreeable to that, we'll start. If you don't want to go down that road and you want to maybe do it in the future, or you just want to keep the paper copies, that's great. I'm of the opinion that going to this type of a system is, is what, again, what the private side is doing and also what other governments are doing as far as document retention electronically, I believe it's a worthwhile effort, and I just kind of wanted to throw it out there to see what you thought.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Bryan.
To Building Official Schrader, so when you say this initial review that you'd be responsible for doing, what are you thinking as far as cost associated and time?
Thank you, that's a great question, and unfortunately, there's not an exact answer to that. If, if the council saw a fit to allocate maybe $3,000, I will stretch that as far as I possibly can. Personally, I take, there's a certain wage associated with, with my reviews, but I think we can get somebody in there, less expensive, once we get a, a framework established, and that, and that would only stretch those dollars out a lot further. So if you saw a fit to, you know, advertise for an intern or a part-time or somebody like that, once I get a dozen files done to say, hey, this is what you do when you come across this, and then somebody else could come on and kind of piggyback along with that at a lesser wage, I think that would, and then I would be available for questions. You know, if, if they come across a file, well, we didn't talk about this, what do you do with, you know, this type of information, I would be available to kind of assist in that as well. And that would take that $3,000 and stretch it further. And that was just a number I picked, you know, thinking that that's a good start, is that going to finish the project? Probably not. Is it going to get a good start? Absolutely.
I have one more question. Do you have any idea of, say, the average file, like, let's say, construction of a house, average house and now then, that was, say, done 10 years ago? Can you guesstimate how long it would take to do that file?
That's a really good question, and you picked 10 years, and that's just an estimate. And I would say, you know, from a file from 10 years ago, I'm going to guess 15 to 20 minutes to go through and actually organize the files. Anything older than that's probably going to take less time because there's less information in there. But I'm just going to guess 15, 10, 15, 20 minutes, somewhere in that area.
So a simple deck would be a lot less than?
Correct. And unfortunately, some of the folders have one or two pieces of paper in them, just because the document retention from 15, 20 years ago wasn't very much. The city didn't really request much, and that's what was common at that time. Now, however, we, we have trust specs, energy calculations, building plans that are the size of this table, you know, and things like that, where currently, again, we're saving that or we're getting that information already electronically, so it's not a matter of wrestling with that paper. But, you know, homes that maybe from three or four years ago are going to be a little bit more involved, where maybe it's 20 to 30 minutes.
And then also, it depends on how many things are happening with that file. There could have been a new home, there could have been a garage, there could have been another accessory building, they could have had a septic system update, you know, the one file could have multiple things.
Exactly, good point. So that folder, so what we do, just to real quickly show you or demonstrate what we're doing, is I could come with a PowerPoint sometime to show you, but into the shared file, it's called the U-Drive, User's Drive, it's the drive on the computer system that Corey and Lori and I will have access to. And under that, we have a properties folder, and that properties folder is an address from every property that we've touched. So within that, there's a septic folder, a building folder, a code enforcement folder if there was any code enforcement activity at that address, and then within those folders are other categories, a deck from 2017, new construction in 2010, whatever it was. And so those are labeled accordingly, so then the documents that are scanned and saved would be in those respective folders. So I feel real comfortable on our system, it's just a matter of getting a good start on it and then having somebody come help.
You had said, you know, you would establish the process and organize the files, and then once you've done that, be able to bring somebody in to sort according to that pattern that you established, is that what you would?
Correct. We're on the verge, this is maybe more than we need to get into now, but we're on the verge, our company, of bringing on full-time employee. We've got a part-time person that's interested in coming full-time. Next Monday, we have a vote coming up for the city of Moundsview and also the city of Oak Grove. So as our workload increases, we have a staff member that's interested in coming full-time. So now with the winter coming up or in the spring when building is slow, I have an administrative person that would be available to come in and help with this. So if you're able to find an intern or somebody locally that's interested in some work, that's great, and if not, I probably have somebody that would be able to help with that as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Bryan.
And on that, but we also have the ability to have our internal staff trained and to do that as they have time available to do it.
As time permits. Right, it's not going to, it's going to be something that, there's going to be a fair amount of repetition, repetition to it, but right, either way, I kind of like to take ownership of it because I feel like I've got a good handle on what's required to be saved and what's not. Anything that's within question, we would, you know, closely evaluate it, we don't want to lose any valuable information. But again, ice and water pictures from six years ago on a roof that passed, why do we have that? I'm of the opinion that it costs money every time you pick it up. Every time staff has to look at that, it costs money, and I would just as soon get rid of it. I think it's going to save us time and money in the future, the city.
Just thinking ahead, we have a nice mild winter and we have maintenance staff that doesn't have a full day, we're not gravelling, we're not grading, we're not plowing, is this something that they could help out with as well?
I certainly think so.
Mr. Mayor, I disagree. Now you're talking about them establishing folders and sending that to, you've got to scan it, and where's it getting scanned to? Joe's computer?
No.
And then Joe is going to be processing it and putting it in files?
Well, once this is established, it should be pretty straightforward, but if we don't think that maintenance is capable or interested in doing it, then that's, that's fine, I guess, I'm just offering an opinion.
I mean, I don't think that that's a good use of maintenance, I mean, doing office work and doing that kind of stuff, I really don't think that's.
Don't it have to?
Yeah, because, I mean, I can, they can do filing, but this is a little different ballgame.
Yeah.
Have you read some of Joe's memos? Would you want him sorting and establishing files for them?
I was thinking more Eric.
Yeah.
It was, it was down to a, an intern where somebody was scanning if they could. I didn't know how close it would be to equivalent of filing, if once, once the files are established, now you just take these documents and scan them. I didn't know if that might be something Eric could do.
Well, it depends on if the folders are already set up. Like you said, each, each building file has several different folders under it, so now you take the deck stuff and you scan it, and now you have to find it on your computer where it's scanned, and then you have to take it from there, and then you have to transfer it to the folder of file.
I didn't mean to get off track, so I would leave that to you, Corey, if this system's going well enough and you think this might be something that somebody else could help with, or?
Yeah.
If it's beyond, sorry, yeah, it's folding some newsletters and things like that, they've, they've shown interest or, so if this is something that's a little bit more than we want them to get involved in, then I guess, yeah, that's okay.
I don't, I don't want to derail it before it even gets started here, so.
Right, and then the other question I have is the scanner, is there any problems that we would have with our current copy machine scanner because it doesn't do the big?
That's a great point. The, the state statute as far as document retention is pretty specific in its scope. We do not need to sa, to save the blueprints on a new single-family home. We only save them now because it's easy and it's sometimes beneficial. The building plans that we have rolled up, we, we are on a system where we would contact, use a property owner, say, hey, your building plans are here, do you want to come get them? You can, you know, whatever that's going to look like, we can do that. But as far as, we don't need to physically scan anything bigger than what we're capable of, so our current copier scanner over there is sufficient. Yep. Surveys, basic property information, we can scan that, and that's what we're required to save.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Bryan.
So, so a question on the road in regards to that, as I was going to ask about the bigger pieces of paper that we scan. So when we go to, we rent our machine, and when we go to upgrade our machine, maybe on the list of new bells and whistles we want on that, if they have the ability to do a larger scan, that that would be something we would want because it would give us the ability to scan something larger?
That could be looked at, however, remember, the ones that we're currently getting, the designers, the architects, the engineers already have it electronically, it's just a matter of asking for it. So the older ones from, from the years past, I don't know that that's, it's not, it's a bit, it's worth it.
All right, okay.
Give the owner the ability or the option to come pick it up if they want it, that's theirs, come get it, you can keep it if you want. If not, we'll recycle it. And that'll clean out some, a lot of physical space that's being utilized for that right now. So that was my opinion on the subject.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Bryan.
One other question would be, have you looked at the capacity on the server as far as, are we going to need a bigger hard drive to store this stuff?
Great question, and that's been addressed. I did ask RB's computer, Chris and Steve that work for the city, and I showed them some, some documents or some folders as examples, and essentially, as long as we're not saving photos, which we don't need to anyway, they seemed comfortable with us going ahead and doing it and seeing how much room it's going to take up. They didn't anticipate, excuse me, having regular PDF files be much of a problem, no. It's really hard to anticipate how many gigawatts.
Oh, yeah.
You're going to need, but physically looking at the storage space, the, the physical number of papers that we have, it did not seem to be a concern. Storage is pretty cheap, I guess.
So you talked about maybe having a PowerPoint. Is it reasonable to have a flow chart as well?
I could develop something like that, sure.
I'm thinking, you know, flow charts, said, okay, here's what you would do, here's what somebody else would do, here's what level of competence is needed for that.
Just so we all have an understanding of what that storage system would look like, I could, I could bring together PowerPoint, sure, in the future. I just, for tonight's meeting and for tonight's purposes, realizing the time constraints and everything else, just wanted to see if council is interested in pursuing that, and then perhaps allocating some money in the budget going forward to get a start on that type of a project. That was the purpose of me bringing it up.
Corey, do you have any other pros or cons that you'd like to bring up?
No, I just wanted to mention what he said about storage is, is you've got to keep in mind that that's not the only thing getting stored on those servers.
Right.
We've got a lot of documents packets get stored on there every single month, and that's a good 70, 80 pages every month, so, you know, between that and that, it may, you might have to upgrade it depending on what other resources it's working on.
And some of the, the way we store that too can be looked at, you know, as far as the, the method of storing it into zip files and other things as far as how that actually physically works. I'm, I'm learning every day. RB's is really good, I really enjoy the interaction with them, they've been very supportive of this. And again, that's the way things are, that's the way of the future. Actually having boxes of, of paper is really not typical for long-term storage any longer. With today's technology, it is, that's just the way it is. And, and again, the efficiencies that we can realize, somebody wants information, whether it be a septic as-built, or they need something as, as an email, you know, they call us or email us, and we can send that information really quickly. And again, it's also the quality. The quality of these documents are retained electronically, there it is, you know, whereas papers, paper copies, the ink fades, they get folded over, they get misplaced, then what do you got? That's, that's part of what we're realizing.
Council have anything else, or? Just Shrader while he's here?
Thank you for your time, that's what I really kind of wanted to put out there. And as always, if you have any questions, just send me an email.
Thank you.
Corey, have you, have you put anything in, in the budget regarding this at this point?
No, this is the first that he brought to me, I was, just was surprised that he was going to bring it up.
I just wanted to bring it up for discussion, if it's something you want to talk about for next calendar year, that, just not very often we have a sliver of opportunity just to throw it out there. And if it's something with a few thousand dollars you want to pursue next year, I figured now was the time to do it. And we've talked about it one-on-one in the past, right, but it was never on the agenda anyway.
All right.
Thank you.
I think one of the things we could do, Joe may come later, we could have some discussion on some of his items, but looking at what we just got from the financial report by Object Code, here's a date, 9/18/17, it might be helpful to look at, you know, a quick run-through on where we've, you know, we're three, you know, we're three quarters into the year, so we got a quarter left, taking a look at our receipts and see what it looks like we aren't going to make, best guess from your experience, Corey. But take a look at the ones we've already exceeded our, our budget for the year, and we still got a quarter to go, and I guess I ask you, Corey, did you make adjustments based on what you've seen here, or the adjustments that you had made, your best guess prior to actually analyzing the?
Yeah, they were best guess prior to actually analyzing because some of these things, like the right-of-way permits, well, we knew why that is over budget, just because there was a bunch of new internet stuff that went through. And that's another one, the farmer's market permit, that's, you know, that's something you can't rely on. The wetland reimbursement, we never can rely on that, there's no guarantee you're ever going to get that. Zoning and subdivision fees, that's just depending on what comes up from the public as far as what they're planning on doing. What else did we have that we were already over budget on? Ballfield rental, well, the reason why is because with the new system, it's, it breaks that base on Park and Ballfield. So honestly, I think we're kind of still right on track with everything, I mean, but it's still hard to judge what's going to be more or less than what was anticipated. Taxes, that's always a tough one, I don't know what we're going to receive, if there's people delinquent on their taxes or not. So, and then sometimes we get a couple years past delinquent taxes that we collect up, but we also get delinquent taxes, so.
I understand the building permits, looking down here at the court fines and administrative I understand the building permits. Looking down here at the court fines and administrative fines, from a receipt standpoint, we're 10,700 under. Is that something that we anticipate significant activity in the fourth quarter, or is that?
Again, the court fines are definitely based off of how many citations are, you know, when the sheriffs stop them. And the administrative fines, we don't anticipate any to be paid this year, so.
Court fines, we're still anticipating in, for post-2018, 15,000. And we dropped the administrative fines to 2,500. And refunds, we're keeping at 2,500. Park and rec concessions, we're pretty close on. Tower lease permit, tower lease payments will be coming in. And the planner and the plan check fees and the, those are activity-based. If we don't have them, we shouldn't be paying out on the other end as well. Town hall rental, do you think that?
Well, last year we collected 6,331. And I kind of figured it out based off of having Tony Alfelt out of it. And I think that 5,200 is sufficient.
Think it's still achievable?
I think so. But we still, I mean, I guess we've only collected 14,000, so I don't know. We still got the holiday seasons coming and the church, so.
How much does a church pay you, huh?
Something over 50 per week.
Anybody else on the receipts, the interest, we still got it 1,200. The Federal Reserve's going to help us out there. We got that new deposit in the community pride.
Yeah, but that's different. The interest on here is more of the interest terms, although the one, the reason why is because when we cashed out the one CD, a CD, we did put the interest in dislocation, but generally, we don't, we don't, in most cases, when we cash out a CD or when we reinvest, we reinvest the whole thing. Because we just generally do a transfer. We don't take the money out and then put it in our bank and then take it out again. But that's why, otherwise, our interest earnings are only on our checking. And since it's divided out to several different accounts, we compare them all, like $32 a month for our general funding interest.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rick. If you look at, and I know we've talked about this before too, but fire calls paid, we budget $8,500, and to date, we're at $752. You know, that's a big discrepancy there, and I know we've talked about it before, but, you know, I guess in my opinion, I don't think we should really be charging for fire calls unless it's, you know, an illegal burn, or, you know, arson, or something that obvious, you know, illegal business, or, you know, something along that lines. But again, you know, if you look at what we've got to date, you know, we're way off on receipts there. And again, are we, in a sense, somewhat double-dipping because people are, you know, paying some of their tax revenue is paying for the fire department budget, but then we also are charging for that service? And if you look at the numbers as of to date, you know, again, there's a huge discrepancy between what we do budget and what we actually receive.
Corey, to Councilmember Rick's question, do we have any outstanding?
Not that I'm aware of. I'd have to take a look and see, but I'm not aware of anything. There hasn't been a huge amount of calls this year, and some of them, I mean, what did we have, a Demya the house fire or something big last year? That, you know, there was a couple of bigger things, and that's why we had so much come in last year, but yeah, we can't guarantee the.
Well, and the chief had said that the majority of your calls are medicals, so, and those are usually lower rates than sending out the fires.
Or fires, and if there's more than one, it's split, and, you know, yeah, it's just, and then if you, if they're outside of the city, you can't really collect them. I mean, you can send them a bill, but it doesn't mean that they're going to pay, and there's no way to assess them. Because you can't assess outside of the community, so.
Go to small claims court.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Yeah, but it's not.
Yeah, that would take cost.
We used to do it years ago. And you used to put on and just put a judgment against them, and they typically get their money, but yeah, there's a cost to that too.
Yeah.
It does seem that, you know, in the older days, when somebody would get a claim in the small claims court or judgment against him, people had a sense of duty, they paid it. Now they just, it seems like everyone just blows it off. Yeah, there's no enforcement. You're kind of like, if you want to pay, you pay, but the judge isn't going to come chase you down typically either. But you have to weigh the cost of somebody representing us in the small claims court too. Paul, do you see with the new rescue truck that that would affect our medical calls as far as cost? Running that out instead of the engine, or is it same number of people that's basically the cost?
You know, I guess, I don't know if I could answer that directly, but I don't, you know, it, the way we respond is however many people show up to the station. So you could get on a medical call, technically, if eight people showed up, you know, we still pay eight people. So, and the truck holds five, so it's, it all depends on response. So, but as far as equipment-wise, I don't see it being any different.
Mr. Mayor.
That's where I read.
Other than maybe a gas mileage difference between the two.
Yeah.
So, a question then for Councilmember Rickard. So if I call and my husband's having a heart attack, they dispatch the ambulance, they dispatch the sheriff, and they dispatch the fire department. Is, do we not have a protocol that says we don't need eight people to respond to a heart attack?
We're a paid-on-call department, so at any time, how do you know who's available?
Okay, so, so when you get your page, do you, do the firefighters respond to base to say, I'm responding, so that base, I'm not finding out the right word, but base knows that five are going?
We have a new app that we just got where you can hit respond or unavailable or whatnot, but, but that's not always used and not.
Well, and the other part of that is you really don't know how big it is. And when you're initially responding, you don't know because the duty officer or sheriff isn't necessarily on-site yet.
Correct.
And so you don't want to do anything that would discourage people from actually showing up here and say, okay, I showed up and it's a little bitty thing. You're going to get paid, what's an hour for showing up?
Yeah.
You're going to get paid the hour, and if it's a bigger deal, you want the people here ready to go. I was thinking of when I was down in the Champlin, working down there, and the fire department down there responded to a person had mixed chemicals down the basement trying to clean out a drain, and they dropped. So I figured, okay, go over there and, you know, somebody needs to just get him out of the basement. When they went over there, the guy was about 400 pounds, and they needed quite a crew. And the first three people in, because you couldn't see anything, they dropped also. So they had to go out and gear up and go back in and drag everybody out. If you say, well, it's just one guy dropping down the basement, and you send a small crew, and then you have to re-scramble. I think the idea is get everybody here, and if they sit at the station because you're not needed, like pay an hour.
Well, it's not just that. It's now, you know, we have, for an example, say, go back to your example, you have a heart attack. CPR now is a lot different than it used to be, you know, and it, we have what they call is a rescue pump, and they've proven that with this rescue pump, that the way it works is it actually retracts the chest more, so it actually brings it more capacity. You do a two-minute cycle on that, and you're spent, and then you rotate. And if, you know, you have two people there, you know, and depending on, you know, where the call is and if an ambulance crew isn't ready, you want to be able to rotate in and out and not just a couple of people, because again, like I said, it, even in training, you do a two-minute cycle and takes it out of you.
Well, I think even the AEDs.
Well, again, you, you know, on an average, say, an average heart attack, you have somebody doing rescue, you know, the rescue pump, you know, somebody doing airway, somebody getting an AED, so that, you know, there's, you know, a minimal of three people with and then rotating. You know, so it's.
I guess there's a question.
Do we, do we charge on medicals currently?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
So we did drop the fire, I see Corey dropped the fire call number down to 5,200 for next year, so.
On revenue side, on the receipt side?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that's, Joe has joined us. Thank you for making time. Receipts is considered page one, right, or page two?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, if I can just start on one thing in the Roden Bridge program. At our last budget meeting, it was discussed about Steve and keeping him on his employment. He did do some checking, and he would not be required to do the care of, and nor would he have any penalties, no matter how many hours he worked. So if the council received to keep him on permanent part-time, they could do so, and there would be no additional, of course, benefits it was sorts other than his standard Medicare and all that that the city would have to pay. And then because if he stayed under the 32 hours a week too, then he wouldn't be, even though I wouldn't think he would take him, but he wouldn't be gone to the health insurance as well, because you've got to work 32-plus hours, so.
And has he plowed for us before, Joe?
He's plowed once or twice.
Would he be somebody you would count on to be one of your plowing crew?
I talked to him today about it, and he would do it.
Would you be interested?
Sure.
What about Jerry? Is he interested in plowing?
He probably is, I don't know if I want him.
Grab him as one thing. Do you have your driver set up for this winter yet?
I have one driver, so that's why I talked to Steve about it today.
And so who else do you have for, is Dana?
Dana, the driver, maybe, one time.
And who's, and then you and Eric, and would you be doing the grader typically?
If it gets really bad, we'll take the grader out.
Otherwise, you guys are in the big trucks?
Yeah.
And that's sufficient at this point?
Yeah.
So Mr. Williams, you planning on using him this year?
No, unless I really, really have to. He kind of, he treated me last year, so.
Yeah, that was an unfortunate surprise.
Yeah.
So at this point, Steve's staying north for the winter, and he'd be willing to be a permanent part-time, is that what you're calling it, permanent part-time?
Yeah, he's buying a house up here, so he ain't going nowhere.
The unemployment that you, let's, so we want to, with Joe here, start with Roden Bridge. We're on page five. Do we have any receipts for Roden Bridge? Scroll.
I think it's those and then around, we've got some of them.
Colverts?
Yeah. Colverts on the budget portion, or?
Yeah, the budget portion.
Well, because it's all combined now, so the colverts are kind of, are way down on the, you know, look at this, we're just going to put them on bigger sheets. Not to use, use it as a summary. So we'll see.
So driveway permits, mailbox, colverts.
Yeah. And the mailbox, a lot of it has to do with, and the driveway permits, a lot of it has to do with the new building houses. On occasion, we do get a separate driveway permit or somebody's mailbox, they want to swing away, so we sell them on. But other than that, it's, I mean, we don't know.
The right-of-ways are then combined now too?
Yeah, yeah. It's combined as far as this goes, but when you change, you know, it's kind of allocated and all of that.
Yeah, from receipt side, it's combined, from the dispersments, it's. From the dispersments, it's.
Yeah.
All right. Contractual out $4,000. What's, what's the thought process there? Repair maintenance contractual. So this year, we budgeted $10,000, so far we've already spent 15, what? What did we spend with extra? The culverts? Culverts are on here, they're, we've budgeted 18, $8,000, we've spent 13.
Getting the trucks fixed.
Yeah, it says, and repairs and maintenance contractual machinery and equipment for 5200 for this year, all right?
Well, just that my report doesn't say exactly what it was for, but we've got Colin Brothers Towing, Ziegler, AB Welding, Mountain Garage, Hydraulic Specialties, Card Member Services, Ziegler, Ziegler and Blaine Brothers Truck Lane.
2015, it was 85. 16, it was 2,000. And like 15,000 so far this year.
This one, the comment, it said includes culvert repairs. So was that to get the extra trailer and, no, because we didn't have to rent the extra trailer, because you contracted the culverts?
Right. Just to let you know, we're going to replace two more culverts, rather than three, when we're going to get rid of the speed bumps.
Where are they going over?
From, uh, ones in front of the, uh, storage units and right past the storage units.
Similar to what happened down at the 185th there?
Pardon?
Similar to what was pushing it down to 185th? The speed bump we had down there.
Well, this one here's got 24 culverts in it. I think the only way we can fix it is take them out and we'll put three culverts in this place, so we get them covered over. Right now, there's only four to cover and they're evening up so bad you can't, it's getting bad.
Road and Bridge. So, Mr. Mayor, did we still have to include the unemployment for next year?
Well, Mr. Mayor, you might want to consider still having something there because even though we might have Steve stay on, if we do decide to hire another seasonal kid that mowers or something, then we always want to take into account the unemployment.
Or Jerry.
Yeah, so, I mean, does it have to be that much? Probably not, but we need to take that into consideration.
Corey? When we were talking about that, were we also not asking if college students receive unemployment and?
Yeah, there was, there was something in regards to that, but, and I don't know if it's up to them to... Because remember, we, when we tried to dispute the one young gentleman and he was a college student and they wouldn't let us dispute him.
But was that part of our case or was it just that?
Well, it was part of it as far as it, he was a seasonal and that he was a student, but, oh, this is where, non-culvert employment includes employment by most churches as sheltered worker in a government work relief or student employment work study.
And being it's not a work study.
Yeah. Or academic and hospital internships, so nothing else really applied to that.
Those rules have changed quite a bit over the years. Those rules have changed quite a bit over the years.
Yeah. Well, what does it take to make it a work study?
Maybe it's just a hard of culture.
Yeah, student.
University of now then.
I have a question for Joe. Actually, I have two questions. One was when we first met, and of course, I can't find it on here, but fuel, motor fuels and in the past, we had gone out and done the pre-buy and you were going to check as to where we were in the timeframe of doing that again.
As long as the fuel stays down the way it is, it's not really worth it. As long as it stays at 250 a year ago, just when you get to the $4 one where it really hurts.
Is, is the process, is it, is it a yearly calendar that they look at? Is it?
Only three or four months.
Okay.
Because right now, we're getting to the winter blend and you can't pre-buy that.
Okay.
How do we sit for fuel right now? Are tanks full?
No. Now, we want to get them down pretty low, so we can switch them over to winter blend next month.
How about sand and salt?
Yeah, I'm getting prices on 100 tons of salt. And we got, raises back up.
And sand? On the gravel roads, you pretty much just use the sand, right?
Pardon?
Gravel roads, you pretty much just use sand?
Yeah. Sand we give year-round, so. Our barn's not big enough to hold enough for a winter.
The professional services, we over by 1600. Do you know what that was, Corey?
That's where we paid Paris for the culverts. There was that and then, well, the Ray Pennupin Electric, but that shouldn't have been in there. That was only $27, so.
So we, 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 we paid 13,000 on culverts, oh, that was for the work they did on Jarvis?
Yeah, whatever, there were several different culverts that Paris replaced and I don't remember where they were all at, but that's which fund we paid them on.
And that's going to go up with these three? Are they going to work in that or are you going to do these, Joe, on Iguana?
Who contracted them? We're getting prices now.
So that'll go up?
Yeah.
Snow removal, ice and snow, what is gravel and rock for ice and snow removal? We budgeted 9,000, we've spent 3,400.
That should be still the same as salt and sand because there's no, I don't think that there is a, I think they've had a.
Specific line item.
A line item under the new program. First of all, so.
I was going to say, why are gravel and roads in snow budget? So it's salt and sand.
Yeah.
It's really big sand we're getting this year. It's good traction, you won't get some of that railroad rock out there.
One of the other things, and I know me and Joe had talked about in the park department, is one of the mowers is in need of some major repairs.
Have the Toro?
Yeah.
So that's going to be another large expense, I believe.
Is there, I'll ask this, is it worth repairing or is it time to be replacing? I'm sure we're going to have to replace.
Pardon?
So if you repair it right now, is it good for another season or two or?
It'll last longer than that. It is starting to smoke quite a bit, so I don't know if the rings are going bad in it or just the injectors. We haven't taken it in.
Is, is this a repair that you're capable of doing or is this going to be?
No, got to take it down. I don't know if it gets injectors pulled and checked, see what's wrong. See if the rings are, I don't think the rings are bad, I think the injectors are, if that's the only thing, it's not so bad.
Where would you take it?
Take it to Crawford's or Don Lano's, one or the other.
Couple thousand dollars or?
I have no idea.
Because we still, because there's still, well, operating supply is left for parks, I don't know.
I need a new flywheel put in it for one.
Mm-hmm.
Going to Toro or MTI, flywheel itself is 2,300 bucks.
Okay.
What I want to do, and once we, once they pull the engine out of it, rotate the flywheel quarter of the turn, put it back together. Could make shit last another 20 years. They won't do it, a dealer won't do it, but get the engine out of the schoolroom, four bolts and rotate it, not set of holes.
Joe, under repair and maintenance supplies landscaping, we're two grand over.
Wood chips?
Wood chips. So how often are we replacing the wood chips? Is that every year?
As needed.
As needed, so every?
Joe, where do we sit on Morton? Is there still a chain on there? Did you take that off?
Took it off.
Are you able to get in there and, have you been in there chipping in there at all or?
No. I'll go back there until it freezes up a little bit.
Still pretty wet back there?
Yeah, I'm in the dog, going for a walk back there this evening. Trail getting back here is too, too soft or, or chipper and stuff.
Going back up to the Road and Bridge, the signs and mailboxes, we put in 5,500, we've only used 102 and.
We just ordered, we just got pallet or mailbox post in.
Any idea what, you haven't seen them?
I haven't seen the voice yet.
Do we anticipate any major sign, you know, we had the mandate a few years back and then we dropped that, do we anticipate any sign updates?
Yep, there is a few, quite a few signs out there I got to get changed. I don't know, Vikings, one of them, getting hard to read, there's one on 66 that's getting hard to read.
Is this along with the, so you won't, with the pallet of posts that you just got in, we shouldn't need a, a major supply of those for next year?
No.
So the 50, the $5,000 to 5,500 here would be primarily for signs then? And that should be sufficient for the signs that you're needing to replace?
I would believe so, yes.
Joe, the one thing we talked about briefly when we chatted was that pretty much if you're buying tools, that they're used at the shop and the park?
If I'm working down in the park, I usually take what I need down there. Guys are down there, they got a little set of tools.
Right, I'm just, we were just wondering if we, if we needed to budget for separate park tools if we're just, if we're already including them in the regular Road and Bridge?
If I or Eric take them down to the park, we know we bring them back. We got part-time guys working the park, sometimes they don't come back, so I like to have our Japanese tools stay down there, have it on down there.
The utilities were over already, is that something that's, can we adjust for that?
So the utilities are where?
In the park utilities, we've got, the electric is about even. We budgeted 500 and we're at 410. Refuse disposal, we budgeted 1,000, we're at 16. And repairs and maintenance contractual machinery at 26, we're budgeted 2,000. So garbage pickup, we're 627 over and we got three months to go.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of one of those things you just kind of just guess where. Yeah, it's kinda one of those things you just kind of just guess where most garbage is coming from and just put it in that department. You know, I mean...
When we empty that stuff, does it come up to these dumpsters up here then?
So that's why it's kinda hard to determine exactly how much of it is really park related or not. Since the parks are slowing down, unless money's gonna be considered for it. But if you wanted to, you could switch it out and take, get out of the parks, put it all under the general fund. And then you don't have to split. Now, the electric is a little different because we do give a separate bill altogether for the electricity over the park. So it's kinda nice to be able to monitor that as far as how much electricity we're using over there.
Well, I know last year we talked about, we took some of it out of recycling and put it in the park.
Yeah, see, recycling, they're kinda funny about that. It's like, oh, how is it there's this much garbage? But they don't realize that when you get all the stuff that's dumped off there and if it gets put in the dumpsters.
I would say every time I go close the doors, there's a pile of garbage right inside the door.
Yeah, so there's a lot of garbage that's created by the...
I would say that, you know, I don't know how much you're actually getting out of the parks on those cans there. But what gets dumped in the recycling is some big stuff. I mean, right now, we don't do the wet pack cardboard, so that gets thrown out. There's a lot of plastics that gets thrown out. I would say we probably, volume-wise, have as much or more coming out of recycling than we do out of the parks. Is that a fair statement, Joe, or you guys dump the cans?
Probably, yeah.
And on recycling, how much do we have for garbage?
Just like today, at the recycling center, we picked up, uh, one mattress, three couches and one recliner.
Six thousand is what we budgeted for it. But it's, yeah, maybe six thousand is what we paid. It's forty-four hundred so far.
All right, I'll keep that for now then. Anything else on the parks? I have a question on the capital improvement plan for next year. We're struggling to get through this year's. Next year's, we've got forty-five thousand for a pup trailer.
I don't think that's in this part, but we've got a ton of different packing for one plane.
Now I was looking at it and misplaced it.
Yeah, it's forty-five thousand for the pup trailer. We were talking about keep getting another one? I don't remember, we talked a little bit about it.
Maybe, I haven't priced one. I haven't priced one, I'd like to get.
Is that something that you still see as necessary for next year?
It'd be nice, yes. If we get the ones, I want, if we can find the ones.
Have you seen anything that says that's a reasonable price range, forty-five thousand?
I honestly haven't paid attention. I think the couple that I did find, that was in the ballpark. The trailers I'm looking at, I'd like to have, there are many more in Montana, western North Dakota, that's where you'll find them. You don't find them around here. I want a belly duck pup trailer. Nobody's ever even seen one around here.
And the trailer we have right now is?
It's just like a dump truck, it raises up.
Would you keep that one?
If I could find one like I want, yeah, I would keep that one, just for pups on both of them, both trucks. And use it one to fill any convicted quarters with. A lot easier. A lot faster.
Well, we need to, uh, get that in order so we don't run into the problem we're having with the loader, so. Get you looking earlier in the year and...
My family are not Nevada, but Eric would pull it back if he saw them.
Didn't take it on my briefcase yet. And right now, you've got nothing in 2019? At least on the... Do we have a capital improvement that's, where than February 2016? The capital improvement I'm working off here is February of last year. We have anything more current than that?
The one I have, it started in 2016, yeah.
Okay, so then it goes all the way to twenty...
So we haven't updated this since February of last year. Right now, this shows nothing, so it's forty-five thousand for the pup trailer. Triaxle pup trailer in 2018, nothing in 2019. And then a replace the Ford one-ton with a plow.
The way I got it set up, like one year is nothing. Going year is pretty light to build up the fund to replace the dump truck.
Right now, you've got the...
Red dump truck is seventeen-year-old. So the way it's set up is build up the fund to replace that.
Which is the truck we got last year?
Ford five-fifty.
So this one has, at least on the capital improvement plan I'm looking at here, the two-thousand-eight Ford one-ton with a plow would be replaced in 2020 at a hundred thousand dollars.
Is that, just like the one, part of them, is that red Ford pickup?
Yep. And then 2021 and 2022, we had nothing. And then replace the two-thousand Sterling tandem dump truck with a plow for two-hundred-and-twenty-five. That's the one you're looking at replacing?
Something we're gonna be able to afford. If we go buy that...
And that's the red one?
We got up to some funds to replace it.
And so that's the red one and the blue one's a Sterling too, isn't it?
Right, it's no seven.
Is that, understanding that you're allowing us to build up funds, is this still sufficient to keep you operating?
Yes.
As submitted here?
Yes.
Anything else for Joe? Joe, anything else for us that we should be aware of?
I did, I just wanted to know about them culverts that we're gonna have to replace.
Anything else that you're thinking for next year?
Culvert?
Well, road and bridge or park expenses that, you've reviewed this budget. You're happy with the numbers that you and Cory put in here?
Yeah, please, so yes.
The dust control, how do you determine which roads get dust control?
Usually by the high-speed race tracks. How fast and how much traffic's on them. Most of them are racetracks, I can spray them.
And if you're doing graveling, those don't get it that year?
Yeah, if we're gonna gravel them, we don't spray them.
And then if they gravel this year?
Unless we get done early enough before we spray them, we wouldn't spray them.
I got a question the other day, just as a side thing, but two-hundred-and-fifth and two-hundred-and-seventh was dust controlled last year, but not this year. You're done with all dust control this year, right?
Now we're in the process of burying it, getting rid of it.
Doing what now?
We're grade it deep now to cover it up. So in the winter time, it doesn't collect so much moisture and make it ice.
So did you do two-hundred-and-fifth and two-hundred-and-seventh this year? So if it's done one year, do you typically do it each year?
Reason I didn't do that one, because last year or year before, we did spray it. And they want me to grade it every week. So with no sense of wish the money sprayed it, if they wanna grade it every week. That's the way I look at it.
But otherwise, if a road is dust controlled, typically they get it again?
Yeah, if it's a high-speed road, yeah.
And so from the discussion we had earlier with the crack seal, and I know you and Shane were out looking at roads and stuff, with the numbers we have in here for crack seal and the intention of not assuming that half the city's gonna get done every year, but actually looking at where we need it and trying to target our crack sealing, are you okay with the budget numbers there for crack sealing as well? Counsel, I agree with that as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel, you met with you?
I got something I think we should be doing. In the park area, we don't have a capital improvement plan for our park equipment. We were just talking about a mower that's gonna need replacement, and we probably should have a CIP fund for our park equipment. And one pickup, actually, that Ford that's in the road bridge, that's actually a park truck. And that should be moved over to the park.
Yeah, the one?
Yeah.
This one here, we were just talking about, the Ford one-ton?
Yeah.
What about, um, we were talking about mowers and trucks and major equipment. What about anything else in the parks as far as, right now, we're going to put in new playground equipment or anything new there, we just take it out of the capital fund that's there. So if it's actually gonna be in the park, we use the capital fund that exists and we get our park and trail fee from. But as to equipment, we don't really have anything established at this point.
New equipment, you can take out of that same fund. But we shouldn't, probably be budgeting something for it.
Yeah, I think that, you know, the intention of, or the people's assumption is that if you're giving park and trail fees, it's probably not going to equipment, but you gotta maintain those too. How are the other mowers working? So we got the grasshopper and we got the...
Grasshopper stays down at the ball field. We just bring up the shop in Gilbert, once or twice a year. And the Xmart. Nothing major's gone wrong with it yet. Big mowers run's good, sound's good. I just noticed it's starting to smoke quite a bit. So I don't know if it's, the injectors are bad in it, which... That's all, nothing wrong with it. It won't take that much to fix it.
What to replace that, that's eighty thousand plus?
Yep, to replace the motor, the same size, you're talking sixty to eighty thousand.
But can the motor on that be replaced rather than just the whole mower though?
Well, the actual reason I bought the mower, because of the motor. It's a good motor. Now, I don't think you have to replace it, if anything, you wanna rebuild it.
Yeah.
And just quickly, your skid loader is out to 2024. Is that gonna hang in there that long? With the other loader, will that ease some of the burden on the skid loader?
It'll take quite a bit off of it. Take a lot off of it.
All right, so capital improvement for park equipment? Is that something that... Laurie could help Joe?
I thought I did put something together one time or half, I don't know who I gave it to.
So I would think, you know, there probably should be a category in there. We have minor tools and equipment and repair. But if there's any major tools, we should be considering that too to...
Mr. Mayor, did you want, like, how we have the other equipment funds, did you want one set up? Not saying that you had to put any money into it, or change the budget to, but do you wanna fund it for park equipment?
I think it makes sense, because then you can see it as dedicated and you can see what's there. Otherwise, you're gonna, we're gonna put a capital improvement plan together, but then we're gonna have to fund it. And if we have a plan, if we have planned expenditures, we can start feeding that fund, that capital improvement fund, and lock that money in place for its intended expenditure in the coming years.
Okay, so we can create the fund, but you don't have any plan at this intended putting money or dedicating it in?
Because we don't have any plan to put anything in it yet, yeah. We don't know what that would be, but I think it's something we could probably talk about at the end of the year too, as we look at dispersal, dispersing our, any excess at the end of the year, we could talk about seeding some of that in there. But if we can get Joe and you and Laurie looking at what might go in there for this next year, we can, at the end of the year, start putting some money into it. If the council agrees, I think we should have a capital account for that.
Just to give you an idea, we talked to MTI about rebuilding that motor, or that mower, they want ten thousand. I'm not gonna take it to them, but that's, to me, it's way out of line, but I can give you an idea of what MTI's talking.
But you were talking about, you know, the flywheels, that's something you would do when they had the engine out?
Yep.
Rotate the flywheel?
Does any dealer just wanna replace it? I don't see any reason to replace it.
And so if you were to take it to a dealer, Crawford's or whoever, and say, you think it's the injectors, can you limit it to that? They pull it out and...
Yeah, I can tell them, pull the injectors, test the injectors.
And you don't, we don't just say, fix it and come up with something like MTI did?
No. I'm just telling them...
Is it sufficient to get through the season or is there something gonna have to do with it?
Finish the season with it. That's why I'm, it runs good, sounds good.
Oh, this is a winter project?
Yep.
All right, anything else on road and bridge, park budgets, capital equipment?
I do have a question. Joe, and I don't know if you've seen the finished product, what Andy gave us, as far as the buildings and such. One of the items, some of the items in there are the shelters and some painting. And I'm just wondering, do we have any idea when the last time we've done any, say, routine maintenance to any of those buildings?
Two years ago.
And what was done on them?
They were just a painting, had a bunch of paint, somebody sprayed paint inside the walls and painted.
So that was more just a reactive?
Yeah. And the big pavilion, we replaced a bunch of boards on that last year and stained them, painted them, whatever they did to them.
Andy talked about supporting those structures for wind. Question came up, is could either painting or staining be done yet this year? The park pavilion racking. He mentioned that, and just quick looking through that, he was talking about windshield, is that where the racking would assist, would aid us in the windshield?
Yeah, we talked about that.
Yeah, I think, wasn't he talking about some of these metal ones, where we rattled in some or?
Well, that's what, you know, it doesn't really say here, he says in, like, Twin Lakes Woodlands Shelter, there's no page number here, but ten covers all of that, he says. I was able to call roof system move significantly simply by pushing it on the ground level by hand. State building code requires all structures we design and construct meet nine mile wind load. Fortunately, structures located in areas where they're sheltered by the wind, the wood areas, are not subject to straight line winds. But he was talking about the movement that he could see by hand, and that there would be racking. That would be helping that? Is that something, you would know how to do, Joe, or is that something we've got to get somebody else to properly secure that roof so?
All right. One bad thing about that, you start putting cross braces on it. And some kid takes off running across there and hangs herself, then what?
Yeah, I don't know what the racking would look like.
Go from corner to corner, exit. On at least two sides.
I have a hard time believing too, that the county had a structure built in a public park that wasn't the code. That kind of how Andy's comment was there, but.
Don't worry about that, that chain we had on the gate down there. Start putting turnbuckles on this from corner to corner. I know that's a lot of duty to that.
Let's worry about the paint for now, and we'll dig through this, we can ask further questions when we.
As far as the building code, it depends, you know, what was building code back then too?
Well, that's what I'm saying, but he states, it does not appear that they were designed to meet several parameters of the capital improvement codes in place at that time. Again, I have a hard time thinking that the county would allow a structure in their own public park that did not meet those.
But if the weather holds, is painting something can be done yet this year?
Yeah, find some dry days, there's not too much to do.
All right, anything else for Joe?
So the road and bridge equipment fund, you figured that fifty thousand dollars, if the people put that in, that's enough per year then?
No, I think I had it figured for higher than that. My capital, for my capital group.
The capital improvement that we've got here, fifty thousand would cover approximately the tri-axle pup trailer for the coming year. And you went two years to cover the one ton. Twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, that'd be fifty thousand a year, and then you had three years at fifty thousand. It's not quite enough to cover the replacement of the sterling. That's two hundred and twenty-five, that'd only get you a hundred and fifty.
That's why I thought I had it figured out to put more money in it. Think how I figured it, the fifty thousand, like we got now, once the grader's paid off, that thirty-five thousand was on top of the fifty. Eighty-five thousand going in.
So the grader's paid off. Do you know that, Corey?
Yeah. Oh wait, twenty eleven, where the bond is, says, page two, greater bond, pay off eight one, twenty, twenty one?
Yeah.
Looks like after twenty five, we can have a party.
But I believe that's how I had it figured, the fifty thousand in there, plus the thirty-five, once the grader paid off, add you on top of that.
Where was it on?
It's on the page two of the summary.
It's on the summary top.
So in that case, paying the grader off and keeping the grader in good condition, we would be on track.
But the truck replacement's what, in four years? The grader isn't paid off, it's four years, so the money won't be there.
If it's paid off in twenty-one, you would have twenty-two and twenty-three of the grader payment.
And twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three of the fifty thousand. What was the grader payment?
Thirty thousand.
That was thirty-five.
That quite gets us to two twenty-five. That's one fifty and sixty, seventy? I guess one of those, we can take a look at the end of the year funds and cede it. Right now, up till twenty twenty, we've got the fifty thousand covers it. And you have to look at the grader payoff and what additional we'd have to have. So I'm guessing by the time we get around to that sterling, that two twenty-five may be conservative. I don't see truck pricing going down significantly. All right, anything else on?
How about the road improvement fund? So I see we have one sixty-seven, forty-nine in there, so sixty-seven thousand, that's the grant money?
Yeah.
The grant and, yeah, the small cities, and then it's also the LGA.
I think that's going to need to be higher, I think we should update some every year, until we get it to where it needs to be.
Well, if we took, if we ceded the capital fund, or looked at ceding the general capital fund, and took that out of the budget, that could be moved somewhere else. Because that's fifteen thousand.
Which one are you talking about?
We had the regular fifteen thousand capital improvement, just for general repairs, that we added into the budget for fifteen thousand dollars. On the last page, page eight. Under, for general capital projects. You could theoretically see that fund as well, or look into it in December, and then move that fifteen thousand somewhere else. Yeah, but we just talked about needing that to come in. We could still cede it, I don't, I don't know where we are budget-wise, or checking account-wise at right now, we could still be putting some money into it, just not in the, just not from the, I'm probably not going to say this right, what?
Don't levy for it?
Don't levy for it, right. And Corey and I talked a little bit about, it's a matter of how much play is there to be comfortable, but that could be a way to cede, to cede that.
But wasn't the whole point of creating that line item to have some funds if something comes up like the furnace and A C here?
Yeah, and we'd still put that in, we'd still have that money in there, it would be ceded, so there would be money in that account at the end of the year.
You're saying, take a look at unspent funds?
Yes.
Into that account, rather than budgeting.
Right.
I think any unspent funds ought to go to our road improvement fund. We're trying to get some projects going here, Old Viking, Rogers Lake area. We should be feeding that.
Corey, did you say on the, the grant there, we put in order for the sixty-seven, that includes the LGA?
Yeah.
That's the small cities and the LGA.
Yeah, because if you look on the, your first page, it shows the LGA and the small cities.
Twenty-seven, thirty-nine.
Yeah, that small cities didn't come in nearly, they had said last time we got about sixty-four thousand, and they expected it to double. Is that small cities, is that total for the year? Or is it two payments of thirty-nine?
No, that's, that's the total for the year, so it was two payments of half of that, because I wouldn't put it as a line item like that, if that, if it wasn't for the full year.
But I think we should update that thirty-two thousand, five eleven, whatever, so we have a total of two hundred thousand dollars in our road improvement fund. Last year, we raised it fifty, so.
Yeah, the problem is, or has been, is up until two thousand and sixteen, we were putting thirty thousand dollars a year in there, when our city engineer had projected in his road study that it should be annually a quarter million dollars to just maintain our roads. So from two fifty to thirty, we're way off the mark. So, again, if we don't do anything, or don't keep looking at increasing it in some fashion, we're just going to keep falling short every single year. And then, as we all know, costs are just going to keep going up, so his guesstimate at two hundred and fifty a year to maintain the roads is going to continue to increase.
Definitely, the price of oil continues to go up, that price is going to go way up.
And I'm not saying we can't put, we can't put more money into that fund, I'm saying we can also look at our unspent funds to put money in there. And using our unspent funds, especially for last year, when we were at well over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, for not just the roads, but also our general capital improvements that need to be made. And whatever's in the checking account now. Coming up with that, what are we comfortable at, and then look at where do we need to allocate the unspent, or that surplus, if you want to call it that. To what happens in that scenario, all of a sudden, which will never happen, but all of a sudden you hit budget on every item, and you have no surplus. And I'm not saying we're spending all of it, I'm saying we need to come up with what's comfortable. What's, what's the right number to have that we factored in enough of a, call it a safety factor, if you will? So I guess what's the difference in doing that, or trying to budget your items, and try to get them as close as you physically can, and then just add a lump sum into your road and bridge improvement fund? Instead of waiting until the end of the year to see what you actually got to put in there? I'm not saying we do that at the end of two thousand and eighteen, I'm saying we can do that now, with what's in, with what we have, because there's current unspent funds from even last year, in both the general and the road and bridge accounts. I understand that, but we still have to figure out how to get more funds in there every year going forward, not just this year or next.
Well, let's, let's take a look, you know, last year, we transferred a hundred thousand into the road improvement fund. And so currently, we are at about a hundred and eighty-nine thousand in that fund. All right. Randy had suggested adding another thirty-two five to the, we proposed for this year, taking into account the LGA and the small cities grant, adding another thirty to it and making it an even two hundred this year. Which would put us up close to four hundred thousand in that fund, which actually, now we can start doing something. But if we were to do that, keep the fifteen thousand in the capital, general capital projects at this point. Let's see where our numbers turn out. Let's see how big a bite we're taking, and then come back and see if we need to tweak it. But let's see, if we do this right now, aggressively go after road improvement, and we put something in for capital repair, and if we want to then come back and say, well, let's try and feed this out of the, any excess from this year, rather than levy for it, we can, we can have that discussion. But let's see where the numbers put us first. we can have that discussion. But let's see where the numbers put us first. That makes sense.
So put it at two hundred?
It'd be an additional thirty-two five eleven. Thirty-two thousand, five hundred eleven, for the road improvement. And at this point, keep the general capital contribution of fifteen thousand to see what it does. And then we're gonna take a look at something excess, if we're pushing a levy so high this year, maybe we do want to take a look at excess funds this year to cede that capital fund. But let's see where the numbers are first. If we can do that. Cory, did you get a chance, when you printed the financial report by Object Code, did you get a chance to look through and see if there's anything else that scares you as far as this year?
No, but if you want to know the numbers, it comes to one million, four hundred seventy-three thousand, two hundred ninety-six.
If you opt to two hundred.
One more time?
One million, four hundred seventy-three thousand, two hundred ninety-six. And I don't know what that increase is.
It's a hundred and twelve...
No, percentage-wise?
Yeah, I'm just saying a hundred and twelve thousand, so it's gonna be a big percentage. Last year we ended up by ten thousand, we increased five point eight percent.
So sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, that's fine.
Was there anything that... The only thing that I kind of increased was our repair contractual. Just given that we have a couple contracts that were increased.
Do you have any concerns looking at it? As far as finishing out the year here, do you think we're gonna be okay?
We'll probably go over a little bit there, but I don't see any deal. I think we're still, in the general fund, I think we'll be okay as far as being under budget. I don't see any major anticipated expenditures.
Figuring that right, it's about an eight point two-two percent increase?
I'll double check.
Cory, were we looking at more than computers for next year?
Yeah, that was increased too. Yeah, because we were looking at updating our Windows. And we always want to keep money in computers.
Well, I'm just looking at, we haven't had any expenses this year for that.
That doesn't mean that we won't do it this year.
Right, I'm just looking at, we haven't expended this year that, and if you even bought a brand-new computer, you could have Windows on it for a thousand dollars. And that's a pretty good computer for a thousand dollars.
Well, what are we running for operating system now?
The 10?
Are we?
Yeah, maybe so, I don't know.
No?
Seven, in the seven. It's going to be ten, isn't it? Yeah, seven's not gonna be supported at all.
Well, that's what I'm asking, you know, if we're all running seven oh, we gotta upgrade.
Yeah, and that was what Randy had mentioned, I think it was the end of twenty thirteen or something.
The other thing to look at is, we have the presentation from the contractor that would like to go with us for the assessing service. We need to make a decision on that, because that would, if we were to go with this other company, that would be, I think they said four thousand dollars less.
Yeah, and unfortunately, the county assessor was unable to attend tonight, because they already had a prior engagement at family. So I was planning on bringing them in on October at our workshop, so... The other thing I keep in mind is, it is a proposed budget. It's never set in stone. You can see where it goes as far as when people start doing their statements and stuff, and they always need to know it's proposed. We're just toying with some of the ideas, we're still looking at some options like possibly contracting services for the assessors, and weighing in on the road improvement funds and stuff. And that way you get a sense of what people really feel about the increase. And it might not be as big of an outcry as you might think. And then you can kind of decide between now and December, what, how you wanna maybe do some more tweaking, look at some more numbers, get a few more reports.
Two more months in, and...
Yeah, just to get an idea of where we're at, you know, financially, and then maybe if it looks like, come December, before we have our big meeting to finalize it, if it looks like we do have quite a bit of excess to transfer before the end of the year, then you could be looking at maybe some of these areas you wouldn't need to increase as much, you know, just some options.
I have a question on, I'm just looking at it here, under the fire department, the county records management system where they're hiring the employee. Do we know how that amount was determined? Did by any, I know, I just have the chief's email that he sent out. Do we know if it was based on percentage, you know, that...
Do you have them to know?
Yeah, there is a formula.
Okay.
That they have set up for all the cities, similar to what we do at the watershed. So there's a formula that's set up. The problem is, the cost for that communication system just keeps going through the roof. The frustration is, when they came and presented it the first time, what it looks like now isn't anything like that. And they've gone through a couple of different providers, that the people that originally sold it to them couldn't support it in the way that it needed to be supported. And so then had to bring somebody else in, and had to get up to speed. And they're finding out, because of data practices, and there's a variety of things, what they originally thought could communicate directly. If you remember, maybe you weren't on the council, when they first came out and sold this to us, they were going to be able to pull up to a scene, and any emergency responder would have the same information. And so, if you were coming up to a scene, and you knew that the police had had multiple calls in this house, in this property, and you are the firefighter responding or an emergency, you know, an ambulance or whatever, you would have the same information that the police might have, saying, this is a dangerous situation you're going into. If there were fire records, the police would have that going in. So everybody was gonna have this common base, but because of data practices, they realized that can't be...
Because they're different agencies.
And so the administration of this became more cumbersome, because now, instead of having one administrator feeding information to everybody, now they have to make sure that they don't send out information to all the firefighters of something that's protected information. So now they have to learn how to limit that. Well, that was one headache they didn't anticipate. The other one was just the administration of it overall. Anybody who's installed an IT system, the salesman comes in and tells you this, and then the installers come in and say, now, here's the reality. And I remember, we did one at work at one of our previous companies, and they came in and, you know, forget how many tens of thousands over budget, and they threw a party for all the people who were working on it. Because you kept it down to, you know, under a hundred thousand dollars over plan, so... That, I think, has caused a problem. So we, they do now have, you know, a full-time administrator, and it's continued to go up. But they do use a formula, so everybody's going up proportionally.
Okay, those I wondered, if it was a proportionate length of our water?
We just can't get them to say where does it stop.
Yeah, well, they can't tell you.
And so the next budget vote is gonna be in October here, for the next year's budgets. Actually, it's for 2019. But yes, it is proportional, and it is on a schedule, but it just keeps getting more expensive.
All right, thank you.
And it's a challenge, because when you go to the meetings, you've got the professionals there that deal with us all the time, and they say, what else can you do? And it becomes a bit of a rile, because all the elected officials are saying, there's a lot you can do, figure it out. But then you leave the room, and all the professionals get together.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Bettinger.
Yeah, I'd like to ask Cory a question. Is there enough money in the budget to give the employees the cost of, or those cost level or merit, a raise, like say, three percent? You guys only had a raise once in the last ten years.
Yeah, and as far as I recall, there should be enough in there to cover that. And that would include having Steve on as a permanent part-time, and in our department. Because, yeah, that would be another thing coming up, because Lori will have been here for a year now, and whether or not there's any participation of the raise for her either. If you look at other communities, similar size and that, I mean, the deputy clerk is getting paid well more than what she's at, so... But yes.
What's this, on page, what is this? Page eight. Property cleanup fund, what's that?
That's old, and we had a property that we had to clean up, and there was some costs associated with it. So there's no money going into it?
No, I just seen it on there, I just asked a question.
Oh, no, it's just an old fund that we had to pay. Do you remember the property next door to Lori Allman?
Oh, yeah.
That's the property we had to clean up.
I just seen it on there.
Several years, but she did pay a vet taxes.
And we have to have this turned into the county no later than the twenty-ninth, which is a week from this coming Friday. Anything else that...
For the civil attorney, I was just curious how we came up with the fifteen thousand? Did you have the average of six hundred per month? No, you actually, I was hanging with my father.
Oh, that's probably big stuff.
Yeah, you split them up, I see that. But if we went by the average, two thousand a month is twenty-four-ish.
Yeah.
Six hundred a month is seventy-two hundred-ish.
And it depends, I mean, it depends on how much you use them per year. So, best-case scenario, this is what I came up with. I mean, it's really hard to determine how much services we're gonna use of Bob Robey, and he'd be the civil attorney. So, I just best guessed it.
So the legal notices publishing and the ordinance publications, are they taking into account that we're paying for those this year, somebody?
Well, that's what, you guys never gave me an idea of what to do with those. As we talked about at the last meeting, is that we do have some expenditures there, especially when it comes to pet clinic and all that kind of stuff. But we haven't heard any word from either one of the papers as far as what they're gonna charge of any for this year.
Well, assuming, if I got them all right, assuming the, we had seventeen notices, and if we paid the nine dollars and seventy-five cents an inch, that would be twenty-seven forty-four sixty-three. And you were saying, this year was a typical year when we talked about it briefly before, or so?
Yeah, but we were saying typical year if you wanted to be, because we had, and I wouldn't say it was typical, because we had a lot of public hearings this year. So if we weren't using the record or if there was a different price associated, we did have a lot of public hearings notices that went out that we didn't have to pay for.
Right.
So...
We had twelve public hearings that were posted. And seven government notices, I didn't know how that got split out for legal notices versus ordinance, however that worked out. Nice. That was yours.
People know that I'm at meetings.
So I don't know what else, however many more would be taking place this year.
I don't know either, yeah, I can't say.
And I think the record was saying it was like thirty or thirty-five dollars per notice next year?
I don't think you ever gave it.
I don't think you ever gave us the cost.
No.
Oh, he said this.
I was, I'm going off of what he said that other cities were paying.
Again, that's what I'm saying. He's never specified to us what he was going to charge us this.
So the cheapest, cheapest announcement that we had was seventy, sixty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. The most expensive one was, based on the union of nine dollars and seventy-five cents, the most expensive one would have been eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy-two cents.
Does he want us to set a date for our meeting approval before the 20th ninth?
Next Monday, look. Still got a phone working here, Paul?
Mm-hmm.
Is this one waterproof?
I know, the other one didn't get wet. It just, they figured it was probably a bad charger.
Oh, I thought the one before that was wet.
Well, yeah, the one before that I went waterskiing with, but, yeah, it actually fried my wife's at the same time, so both of them, so.
Monday, the 25th, work for people?
If I may, what's left?
We need to get the numbers.
We got to approve the budget.
I know we have to approve the budget, it's just, is it just giving Corey time to put them in?
Put them in and then figure out what the number's going to be. And if that chokes anybody, get some feedback.
Yeah, because I mean, I already put the number in. You've only made one change, basically.
Yeah.
So I'll print you a new page or new pages, and I'll put the, on the bottom, the fifth draft and the new date, so you have it.
And the increase.
Here's a question for you guys, I hate this legal size. You mind if I remove the 2014 budget in Nashville then for a final proposed budget?
I actually printed it out. It reads a little smaller, but I print out.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I just print out what you got on there. We got, I love it.
Okay, well, then you can do that.
It's legible enough.
Yeah.
We're not that old yet.
What time?
We should be able to, seven, either none.
So this will actually call a budget meeting or special city council meeting? Which one would you prefer?
Budget approval, budget approval meeting.
Okay.
And do you want some numbers for the PARP, for the equipment costs?
Yeah, we can work on that, and we'll put a CIP together for that. And then we'll include that, plus your Road and Bridge CIP on the last page, or there'll be another page added onto the budget as well, so that it's all there.
The other one I just was looking at is planning and zoning part of employees.
That's for the PNC commission members, they get paid at the end of the year.
Right, so there's seven of them at twenty dollars a meeting.
Some of them don't?
Well, so there's seven of them at twenty dollars a meeting. It's a hundred and forty-eight per person if they take it. So it's nine hundred and eighty dollars. I don't, if we don't, if we aren't contemplating increasing the size of that, right now we're budgeting fifteen hundred dollars. And the most we had was 2014, and that was nine sixty-eight. So I mean, we could take that, it's five hundred bucks, we could take that out of there, go down to a thousand, because it doesn't, if they want to do seminars and stuff, that's farther down.
Yeah, but then you also got, so you'd actually, it'd probably be a little bit more than a thousand maybe, because there's also public care, that's a city's portion, so you have to take that into consideration as well.
So that fifteen doesn't include all that already?
Well, the fifteen hundred does.
Yeah.
But when you're saying take it twenty dollars per meeting, twelve.
Okay, I get what you mean, okay. So if we look at other years, it was nine sixty-eight, nine twenty-five, last year was seven oh-one. So that, the highest was nine sixty-eight in fourteen, so that would have included the city's contribution to?
But it may not have included seven? I'd have to look at the number of how many.
Were on at the time.
Yeah, and how many of them took money. We have some committee members that choose not to be paid.
Correct.
So I have to look at who and how many and who put in to be paid.
But you got to budget for it, because that could change.
Well, you would budget for that, if we have seven people, you would budget that all of them are going to take seven.
Correct.
All seven are going to take, you wouldn't cut back, because they use the dual. No, you would take the seven at a hundred and forty a month, times twelve, and then figure whatever our portion is.
As I'm saying, they would have been paid, they would have been one of the seven, but they would have been paid out of the council budget.
Yeah.
Remember that back then, the council members were paid for that, but they weren't paid out of this budget, they were paid out of the council budget.
Okay.
Now, if there was seven members that are all.
I thought it was, it was up there.
But again, it would be a hundred, if all seven of them took it, it's a hundred and forty a month, or excuse me, a hundred and forty a year, times seven is nine eighty. And then whatever our contribution is, add to that, assuming it's less than fifteen hundred.
Typically, it's every four, five, or four, eight, or three, four, eight, or three, five. Thanks, if you're in this.
Two or three, yeah.
Why is that?
So, but that's, that's the thing, if people have some notions, that's moving on. If this number comes in so big, if we're talking about a hundred and twelve thousand dollar increase, I've got feelings. It's choking them.
I will enter that meeting on my computer at home, because I'm going to do it on my phone.
Everybody gets a notice from Mary tonight about a meeting?
I didn't, I said, I'm going to do it on my computer, because for some reason that does that on the phone, I don't know why. Never used to do that. Can we adjourn if there's nothing else?
Everybody okay with adjourning here?
Yes, we should adjourn.